American Bridge to Warehouse is a find yourself at a window right now. It's a great way to find yourself in a window. Each of pressure is meant to be not only beautiful, but to be multi-purpose to better serve your needs and your wants. Features like USDA awards or other programs will be assumed that will reduce the storage to your space. Brains, so why don't you say it easy to do to take it?
I can't see.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Please, everybody stay on mute. There will be time for question and answer. Go ahead.
Hey, well, we're here to discuss the developments out in town. Craft is here. We're going to see what we can, uh, see what we need to get done. It's direction what you, um, do you like to, uh, start out with, Maria?
So the, I think the biggest, uh, issue with the town was the metro districts, the improvement districts, which is something that the vote, the town voted on during the last board meeting. Another concern of the board was, um, the eminent domain. Maybe, uh, Craft can give a little clarification on that?
Sure.
On the contract.
So, uh, we'll start with a general high-level overview. Jeff and I were craft companies, we're developers based in Denver. Uh, been working in Albert County for some time now, and with Kaya for, Kaya well for about three years, two and a half years, uh, specifically on this project. Um, so we have put forward to both the water, wastewater authority as well as the town board, uh, the developer's agreement that we kind of consider the business terms of the deal. Uh, I liken it to kind of getting your financing in place when you buy a house before you actually start to pick out the grapes and the pain. Um, we need to make sure that we can get, kind of clarify some things that were done in the past, as well as put together some of the big financial tools for us moving forward to make sure that we can structure this in a way that works for both the town and hopefully our eventual buyers. Um, as part of the developer's agreement, we've asked for the town to agree to give us a metric metropolitan district. Uh, as we've touched on last week, and we've got district council as well as land use council on the call to answer more specific legal questions. But the goal of these are to provide financing that eventually gets passed on to the homeowner in the form of a tax, which as long as the homes aren't over roughly million dollars, the homeowners can write off on their mortgage tax. So it's kind of a net, net to them and allows us to finance really what comes out to about twenty-five to thirty percent of the roads and the pipes and the ratings and sidewalks and park over a longer term on essentially coming up on the backs of the federal government assumption. But as part of a district, Title Thirty-two districts, you have eminent domain authority. And really, this is just for the purpose of installing the infrastructure that you guys approve. Eminent domain does not give us the authority to go out and take somebody's front yard and build a shopping mall. That's not what we can do with it. Um, what we will go through after we get the developer's agreement approved is an entitlement process that gives both of your boards multiple rounds of comments on the land plans that we will submit, including all of the construction documents that show how we will serve those homes with the infrastructure. Um, it will also go to roughly, I think it's sixteen or eighteen additional referral agencies. That includes the sheriff's department, the fire department, the school district, the state, the geologic society and a whole bunch of other organizations for them all to weigh in on everything from feasibility to life safety to respecting the environment. Um, with that, Corey, are you on? If you can, do you see Corey Reddson there? Would you mind unmuting her? Corey, would you like to say anything else on eminent domain and just how that works and the purpose of it to the extent I investigated anything?
Um, no, I think, I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, it's, it's pretty limited in the scope, but that's kind of the key right there, but I'm happy to answer other questions.
With basically everything within the area that you're gonna build, done for the most part?
So to give an example of eminent domain where we could potentially utilize, I'll go back to independent snow, but at least most of you are somewhat familiar with that. The county required us to build about a mile and a half of county line road. It was on the section line. For the most part, there was already road in place. But back in the seventies, Albert County actually waived all right-of-way, gave back all right-of-way in the county. Um, this was identified in both Blacklist County's master, traffic master plan as well as Albert County's traffic master plan. It was identified in three public hearings associated with the independence project, so everyone kind of knew what was coming. And then the county put that on us because, one, traffic impacts were associated with that. More importantly, it was a life safety issue for the fire department for the, so they wanted to see that completed as per a whole bunch of different meetings with notice and the like. So we, as the district, had the ability to go out and acquire that right-of-way through a set standardized public process using third-party consultants. The reason I say that, because it's a relatively motionless process. It's, uh, us negotiating, did somebody else, it's, we go out and get an appraisal, they go out and get an appraisal, we've got, it's literally a right-of-way acquisition group that sits down and negotiates everything. And again, that's for the benefit of the county. Trust me, we would prefer not to build a five-million-dollar road, but it was something that the county wanted to see. So that's the intent of the eminent domain process. Here would be, for example, if we needed to cross some sort of property. Um, for example, there's a driveway easement to a neighbor that goes from, actually, let me pull up the cycles, uh, to the neighbor in the adobe house out there, you can think that. So we're gonna have to cross that with a sewer line most likely. We don't really know all the infrastructure we need to run through that yet because we just don't have that level of engineering completely. But to the extent that they chose not to cooperate with us, then we could potentially use eminent domain. We would have to pay them fair market value as determined by other people, not us, to cross their easement without taking away any of their existing rights. In other words, they wouldn't lose access to their house. We would just have the right to put a pipe under it. And even when we do so, we'd have to maintain continuous access for them in a different area.
No questions on that?
And then the last concern of the board was the contract, the timeframe of twenty years.
Good question. So this refers to the vesting period. Uh, vesting, it basically means, actually, without me screwing it up, Corey, would you mind chiming in to describe vesting?
Sure. Um, the, the general idea is that the approvals that are defined in here as the site-specific development plan are vested, meaning that the, the town would not be able to unilaterally repeal the zoning. There are a handful of exceptions to that rule. So for example, if the town just, um, did a, what would, what would be defined as a, a law of uniform applicability. Um, so if we got a whole new zoning code, for example, that would, that would be an exception to the rule, but the, the general idea is that the approvals that are in place and defined in the agreement are kind of locked in for that time period. Um, in exchange for, you know, the developer's commitments to build the public infrastructure and this, this fairly large development.
So, and I'll chime in here, Corey. What this really means is the property zone for roughly four hundred and fifty units as per zone that's been in place since, I think, two thousand four, two thousand six. If we go in based upon the agreements that we make moving forward and say, put in five million dollars worth of infrastructure to provide water and sewer service, roads, parks and et cetera, everything that we need to do to pull our building permits. And then say, once the town gets the new park, a hostile board's elected and decides that, you know what? We really don't want that development down there. So at that point, we've installed a whole bunch of infrastructure and then the town decides to rezone everything unilaterally against the property owner's wishes as open space. The vesting protects us against that. The reason we're looking, why we requested the twenty-year term is real estate cycles can be painful. The last time this was finally plotted was about twenty years ago. Um, so understanding some concerns about maybe wanting something shorter, but realistically, if we're going to spend this much money on upfront infrastructure, and it is going to be a very, very sizable amount, we need to make sure that we have the protection to actually build the homes that you guys would approve through title processes.
Right now, they're, uh, building, great ones. Um, pickability, uh, and, uh, again, a little, uh, you know, uh, selling them quicker than making them. Um, are you expecting a home where you want to actually stock? And if you pick, you pick it back up, the economy goes up?
Uh, we always prepare for that scenario. Um, we don't lever up our projects, we don't use bank debt. Um, we think it is very dangerous and quite frankly, probably wouldn't be able to pay interest payments for, say, a ten-year downturn if things weren't really falling. So we make sure that we can do things with cash. Um, we underwrite to what we think is a much more conservative scenario. And usually how we figure that out is going back about ten to fifteen years and seeing what the average is and then projecting that moving forward. Not the best indicator, but it's a hell of a lot more conservative than saying, I pick it only, they're doing five homes a week, so we think we can do that for the next ten years.
I know that, uh, that's you off. Founders, partners, I understand for what? I mean, you, you got to the west of Onay Twenty-Five, you saw the infrastructures all there and there was nothing else, and it was like that overnight. We've got a hospital, uh, it must have took longer than overnight, sure. But yeah, um, I didn't know that was hard.
That's really what we're looking at. Um, and then beyond that, as far as the town and the water authority are concerned, um, we will, we, the town won't be on the whole, the busted infrastructure. And we really think the town's already done a good job of codifying that. It's a lot like the way Albert County's codified that. In that either there is some form of performance guarantee on the infrastructure going in and then a warranty period thereafter. Or the real concern is that you don't get one or two homes up, then a whole bunch of infrastructure that's not installed yet goes bust. And again, the town's done a good job already of codifying the structure that made sure that that doesn't happen.
So is that improved a lot?
So that's a good question. So up until the call we had last week, we thought that it was gonna be a different type of well and the costs were gonna be a hell of a lot lower and didn't know that there were other infrastructure costs that were going, that were necessary as well. Um, and so it may be a good time for you to take over, Debbie, or someone else from the water authority on this. It looks like roughly one point five.
Well, it's not the bottom where right water says we're standing. Um, and the only thing in there that is not a new charge that is something that we would have had anyway is the maintenance on the quarry contact point of the tank. Because technically that tank, we painted, standard painted and sealed. Thirty-two thousand to do that, that's the bit that came in. If we, there was no point in doing that if we weren't gonna keep the tank. So of that one point five, I could really only say three, you know, thirty-two thousand of it was a known expense that we would have. Um, when we talked about it, um, Mark Spurs well came in at, um, when we talked to Semicore and talked to Will, um, Mark Spurs well came in at five hundred without any extras, without, you know, new house walls and stuff like that. Uh, it was ended up at, I think, one point two is what I heard. I haven't seen those figures in over that factual. So.
And then, uh, if you would please remind me, like, does the district have bonds outs?
So we do. We, we, we don't have bonds. We have a USDA loan that is for five point eight. Um, there is no way for this district to take on that debt. Um, I've sat down and helped.
Sorry, when you say take on that debt?
We've done with one point five. There's no way. Um, we're seeking grants. Right Waters also helped us and, and Maria's working on a grant now that would, but the problem is I just found out with that grant, what it will do on four hundred thousand, it actually is more for the quality of water, not here towards what we're trying to do. So if we can put a spin, they're willing to try and put a spin on it, but, um, which can be done. But I can't, I know that you guys don't justify or build your progression or your twenty-year futures on how many houses you're gonna do in here. But from my end, to financially say, okay, I went ahead and did some checking to see, I mean, like Elizabeth right now, in two thousand nineteen, in that subdivision, they did ninety-eight homes. And in twenty, they did a hundred and four, and in twenty-one, they're on schedule to, if they continue at their pace, real to. So I, so I was trying to calculate, okay, so if that's with ninety-eight taps in a year, I mean, and realistically, I would say you're probably closer to seventy-five in time than you're in pushing. Yeah. I, I was, I was trying to be optimistic. Um, that was one of my questions with that, where you guys were coming in. Um, at thirteen, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm adding seventy-nine hundred a month in revenue for the monthly ones they come on, but I've also doubled my, my, my power and my, all of that stuff. So I can't even, I, I tried to justify it, I couldn't understand what payments would be. Um, honestly, right now, to do that with USDA, you'd be looking three and a half, four percent, and you'd have a monthly payment of seven thousand a month. It doesn't even, there's no way the water authority can take it on. And I'll be honest with you, the community is pretty much saying, we, we don't wanna see you do, build it and they will come. We already did that and we have a great tower. So we're kind of at the point where we feel, I can't speak for the whole board, but I can tell you, I feel like, um, you build it and they will come.
Um, so we can probably figure something out. So what that would look like is, um, let's go a little more conservative. Let's say one eight, give or take, and hopefully we do better as we move through the process and get bids and all that sort of stuff, but let's be a little conservative now. I realize that, I think they put, it was one five eight plus a twenty percent.
I was gonna say they have a pretty good tendency, and I thought it, uh,
But he also said it could swing about thirty percent up and down from that, which completely busts every model. Um, so we'll say one eight for easy math. Um, the good news is with the fee structure we proposed on the water and sewer side, it's somewhere north of five million dollars in tap fees excluding any escalation, right?
A full bill, though.
A full bill.
Okay.
So what we could do is finance that one point eight through our district or to-be-approved district. We would, the district would be pledge the tap fees from that. Uh, so in other words, instead of the Kaya well wastewater authority taking the first X number of tap fees, we would assign those to this district. So we're essentially paying the authority the tap fee and then that tap fee comes back to the district to finance that infrastructure. There is a somewhat significant financing on that type of debt. Um, it wouldn't be on the authority's balance sheet, it would be on the Kaya well creek district's balance sheet. And our guess, we ran some quick math on this, it's gonna be somewhere between terrible case, a three-million-dollar cost, and great case of two-million-dollar cost. So let's say roughly two point five, assuming the way things go at fifty units a year, which means that the project pays for itself to install that infrastructure. The debt obligation is on our project and not on your authority. And beyond that, the authority ends up with somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three million dollars of additional revenue from taps after that infrastructure's built up.
So you're, so you would take the one point eight and the two point five, okay, I'm, I'm lost.
No, like, this is ridiculous finance stuff.
I know. So you, so you, so the district would finance the one point eight? Okay, you would get all the tap fees or a portion of?
Enough to pay back the debt.
To pay back the one point eight?
Plus the financing cost.
Plus the financing cost.
Which we'll estimate at two and a half.
Okay, that's the point. Okay, and then I have the two and a half.
Yeah. All in two and a half billion dollars would have to come back to us in the form of taxes. Or the water and sewer taps. And then, because we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of five-three in total tap revenue, that leaves roughly two-eight-ish for the town afterwards in a surplus after essentially this development pays its own.
I'm, I'm, my numbers are working in my head, so, but we can't hear them. So does the four fifty-two include the multifamily housing though?
Yes.
Okay, are you still gonna seek?
Four fifty.
Okay, I have four fifty-two. That's what we have is four fifty-two.
It was four fifty, well, at, at least four fifty that it was.
Yeah, but that's, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, at least four fifty units. Oh, okay.
So it's four hundred and fifty units, is that including the multifamily?
So we figure three hundred and fifty single family and then a hundred attached homes, and that could be duplex apartment, whatever. We figure the demand on the multifamily side is roughly half. And so we propose in the developer's agreement sixty-five thousand and sixty-five thousand for the single family. And then thirty-seven fifty and thirty-seven fifty for the one hundred multifamily minutes, which is roughly five point three million.
That would be the, the cost of that.
Yes, they are, they would do that, do more special, or there's, not for discussion, just for, whatever.
You're talking about who pays for the infrastructure?
Sure, yeah.
So the developer pays for all of the infrastructure.
You're gonna include that in the cost perhaps?
It would, really, everything we're talking about gets passed on the.
But the, so the special thing is the, is the well.
So the well and all the other, call it off-site spinal infrastructure that's more unique.
Right.
Um, we're not, we don't, like, state Denver Water, for example, wouldn't have us finance a well. We just pay a tap fee to them. So, you know, wanna be clear, like, the roads, the town doesn't pay for, the grading, the sidewalks, the parks, the pipe, the town doesn't pay for any of that. We pay for all of that. Um, and then what we're saying here is we will use our district to finance the one point six-ish million in exchange for tap fees to pay for that, plus the financing cost. Like, there's gonna be attorneys and issuers and brokers and all that sort of stuff. Those are all third-party, that's not a profit center for craft. And then what we would probably do is form an IGA with the authority where we have the right to install all that. Our attitude is we're paying it, we're good at doing all this stuff, we know what we're doing, we just recently completed it, we've got another one up north in Need, Colorado. Um, so if we're writing checks, we'd prefer to oversee the work, also so that we make sure it doesn't hold up our project. Um, so we'd need an IGA there, and then we'd also ask for repu- representation on the water authority board. So probably it would be a minority position, just so that you guys know that two developers don't control what happens with the authority. But just because we are going to be heavily involved, we would ask for assistance. So Diane, do you have a comment there? Uh, Debbie was saying that to be on their board, you have to be a resident?
Uh, Debbie, do you have to be a resident or a property owner?
Well, uh, resident, uh, you do not have to be on, you have to be, if they are property, oh, I think you're right. I think it is property owner for water board, for town board, you have to be a resident. Yeah, you're right.
So, uh, they will definitely be able to be property owners.
Yeah, as long as they, as long as the whole project hasn't been spoiled.
Exactly, yeah.
So, there being a cost to, uh, which is the town, or so you're gonna be, it's gonna, I'm gonna, we have four the others, fire taps and whatnot, is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, so under this structure, the water board should net somewhere north of two million dollars. It has been a mad case. Once again, if we were talking about another two thousand six, two thousand eight scenario, it would take longer, the interest count would be longer, and therefore the water board netted less. But assuming relatively conservative underwriting, we think there should be about two and a half million on the water side. And then, keep in mind, we're also paying building permits tax, and, uh, there's huge building permits and impact fees to the town as well. So all in, we're looking at all of the fees that we're paying to both groups, gonna be north of eight million dollars. And then on top of that, we're going to have commercial that generates sales tax, and on top of that, the add valorm value of the property taxes on the homes should produce something north of a hundred, a hundred and fifty grand.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there'd be no, uh, cost to the town, to the town.
So that is the way it's structured, and then on top of that, once we get to the entitlement portion, or the final plat portion, we'll have a third-party prepared financial analysis that shows all of this that you guys can then take and review and hire a third-party to confirm. But big round numbers, the town should net somewhere north of five million, probably more like seven and a half on top of a hundred, a hundred and fifty grand a year moving forward, assuming the good times.
That's the town.
So.
No, the water will, if, if it all, if we did thirty-seven fifty, the water and sewer go on a hundred homes, and then on the three fifty, we did the thirteen thousand, or five point three, and then we got four point three to finance it and really do your thing, right? As you said, two point five and one point eight.
Just two point five.
That would be with the interest, that's with the one point?
That's.
Oh, that's not the way we took it at all, okay.
That's Suzanne, well, I liked her number better.
I do too. So, two point five would include one point eight and a half?
That's what. Well, I have a question. Who is going to check in balance, you guys? In other words, when, uh, make sure that the densities are correct on the roads? Pies been buried correctly, that's your subgrade correct, road base, who's gonna make, who is the neutral party?
Uh, the town confirms all of the infrastructure with either their own in-house inspectors or third-party inspectors.
If that's the end of this. Cause, um, I think there were some things that got in, got shut under the table when they give bond filings, there's some things there.
We use, first off, our builder partners are reputable, quality builders that build. True, but like, with the inspector process and the fact that we don't do business with fly-by-night groups, like, we are just starting off a thousand unit project, we're gonna be in the county a long time. But we wanna make sure that we're doing the infrastructure properly. We, we also hired a construction manager who represents us as the developer to oversee all the contractors as well. And the district has an engineer that confirms it's been installed properly.
Or are you gonna have to process everything that's over there? In other words, you're gonna have to strip the process and pull out the sand rough, if there's any.
Uh, we don't know the full construction drawings yet, just because we haven't gotten to that point.
But with every place I've been, they flipped all that material over and they soaked it down and they tightened it up, the cement, the basement still cracked and everything.
But we do typically design for over excavation, assuming that there's more than like, a point and a half in swell. And then really leave that up to the geotech to determine whether we need to overex, by people in base of ten feet and so on.
Eric, we have an engineer with, uh, Safe Belt, and our building inspector is also Safe Belt.
Not the same guy?
Not the same guy.
Now drainage study with the, you guys have hired.
Correct. So, as part of the construction drawings that we would process with the town, at the same time we do the final plat, we will have detailed phase one, phase two drainage reports. Um, we're gonna have detailed drawing on just where all the pipes go, how the roads are constructed and so on.
What is your guys' thoughts as far as that dirt dam that's sitting on the east side of the highway, or County Road forty-five? How do you plan on handling that?
Uh, that's offsite, so I'm not sure we have any. So we will plan for the historic drainage that is in place with that dam, and then there's always a big hunking contingency factor on top of that.
I know lots of times they wanna know something about a hundred-year flood.
So, here's a map that kinda shows where we think the developable land is, and where that hundred-year flood plain is. So this is one of the early-stage drawings we did with, uh, we actually had two different land planners and a consulting engineer, just making sure we knew where the big red flags were. And then that's what they came up with, and then we promised you guys a land planner, uh, excuse me, a public plan the last time we got together. Uh, here is one that we presented at the neighborhood meeting. This doesn't reflect the comments that we got, but if you see that red arrow on the right, one of the requests was move the commercial a little bit further south, we're willing to do that. And then we also circled the two crossings that we anticipate to get over that hundred-year flood.
So, when we got ready to, uh, build the addition to the school, the old timers started laughing at us. It's number one, that used to be the dump, and number two, we're sitting in the middle of floodplains. So they just knew that that, uh, was gonna be a big old swimming pool. And it was. Remember when they got the floor in concrete?
Yeah.
Had to throw all the gym concrete out.
Oh.
And we thought, they didn't believe us. Right, Chris, I think your answer's gonna be a very busy girl there. That's not, we're gonna fix that. I figured it would be. That's Eric, yeah.
Annette, Teri, Sarah, Kent, any questions?
Not at this moment for me.
Annette?
Not for me, Maria.
Probably down the road, one of the, one of the things we are gonna have to talk about, and a lot of community people are concerned about is how much traffic's gonna shoot down U Street, turn left at the stop sign, go through the forward stop and inundate the that downtown area, if you will, or whether it's gonna come around to Shishoni Street, and shoot out that forward stop and down into the liquor store area. That's, uh, you know, residential, right there as you take off, my house happens to be right there at the end of U Street, which I knew one day we'd have something going on, but, uh, that, that's one of the biggest concerns that, that I've had, losing a lot of sleep over it, because every time I pop something up, I get up and try to jot it down and think about, you know, what we could do to to make sure that everyone in the community, uh, what's your street called? Pomney? Navaho. Navaho, that Navaho Street is traditionally picks up, ton of cars, they come out of the sheriff's office, head down to Pon, head down to Navaho and shoot either down to Monah Store or the liquor store and out. And the, the prize would be on this one, is if we could take a lot of that traffic and push it out forty-five and go down, you know, I've even thought about things like, you know, Shishoni and what's that next one, Chipwaw, no left turns, seven in the morning, because we get a lot of people out of Pine Meadows that use our development road back there for the race track, basically. And it's gonna be a huge influx of traffic, so you, I and the planners will have to, you know, we're gonna have to, as a group, put our heads together and and see if we can move that traffic onto the county road and get them out of, you know, out of town, there is, pardon me.
There is a way to do that.
There is a way to do that.
Big, big huge speed bumps, not just little ones.
They're nuts, have you been on Wood Avenue, ever on Car Springs?
Yeah.
Wood Avenue is a hoity-toity part of Car Springs, all the rich people there. And their speed bumps, I'm not kidding you, are about as wide as this table, and they're about that high.
Yeah.
And they really, they do a good job of slowing down traffic, you have one at forty.
They are that big, they just, they had a couple of them on the orchard. Traffic's a huge thing, I mean, we're so small that, you know, three hundred, four hundred cars a day.
I mean, I'd rather send them down Pomney Street, sorry for those that, probably just bought a house on Pomney Street. But I'd rather send them down to Pomney Street, the middle of town, and we could go away and turn left and turn right, and send them to school. See what happens. One time, I went around the backside of the street, that's for Shishoni. Shishoni, Pomney, the backside of the street.
Yeah.
That's for Shishoni.
Um, so, I mean, there's no, there's no houses or, nothing on that, it comes out right there, Navaho.
There you get to the forward stop and then there's houses there.
Jonathan? I'm gonna have to, to explain that to Rebecca. While the, the question.
Well, I'm, I'm. Well, the good thing is, hopefully one of these days we'll have a new police department and change, change, oh, uh, you know, let them take care of the traffic. But the school zone is a big deal, and that's why we're looking at starting a police department back up, to protect the little kids that walk across the street every day.
Understand, um, as part of the planning process, we'll bring in a group called LSC. Uh, we believe they're the state's best traffic engineer, uh, they do a significant amount of work, for example. Uh, they, we've already talked to them on a high level and was like, oh yeah, we can put a stop sign here and there's certain things we can do with the road layout, it's either pull traffic away from town or move it and pull it back and split it through. Uh, if the town is open to things like speed bumps, a lot of towns don't wanna do it because they've got forty-seven different smoke bowl operators. That's not the case here, so they know it. Um, we're willing to contribute, you know, cash or like, make those improvements ourselves off-site, if that's something that the town wants, but we hear you loud and clear that traffic's longed out.
Put some counters on the county road and, and, uh, some of these controls that they're remaining off, and we'll see if it's exactly what we're getting, exactly.
And then we can also look at pensioning street widths to slow traffic down and do other things like that too.
I'd like, the light strips out my brush. Maybe a potential, uh, light at the forty-five?
We're hoping not.
Also, doesn't have to be a potential, it's a state.
Yeah, that's.
You know, the first traffic light they put up in Elizabeth with thirteen and eighty-six, they actually went to an auction, bought the lights they'd put up themselves, I wish they could do that more.
Yeah.
That's scalable.
And, we're guessing to signalize that intersection would be seven hundred.
They will, as long as you think about it, we'll be together, put it together. Any other questions? I got one, fire away. So we got this, uh. I'd imagine it, uh, should be on the agenda. So, and they clarified the issues we had on the contract. I mean, I guess we're on, you know, and I'll just. They wanna object, first, uh, second guess, wanna try to resolve, we got it here, we're sitting here, what's here? We made money on the deal, so we're happy. I'm gonna do that, yeah, that's a little great. Well, yeah.
So, I think we mentioned this at one of the first meetings, but we meet it when our states are intertwined. We wanna see the town and the water authority in a strong position so that our residents don't step into a situation where they end up getting tapped on the shoulder, go bail out. So, we're hoping that we're putting something together that kinda gets the infrastructure done and leaves everyone a nice bit cushion to make improvements, pipe expansion work. We, what we've talked about today is different than what we've got in the developer's agreement. So what we now will use a revised developer's agreement, kind of addressing everything that we talked about tonight, Corey, we can turn that around in the next couple of days, correct?
That works.
Okay. Debbie, would you like to see two steps, if you want us to break out?
I, yeah, I think it should be broke out.
Um.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, wanna go on record that the numbers we threw around, uh, Jeff's good at this, but this is math we did today, kinda anticipating where this was gonna go. Um, it can swing, so consider that market-dependent, interest rate-dependent, well cost-dependent and all that sort of thing. But it looks like we still have a good cushion regardless, uh, so that the water authority ends up in good condition.
If everybody's smiling and happy after Tuesday, what be, I'll say before you break down.
So we still need to do all of the design, work with the referral agencies, get both of your council boards blessing, a whole bunch of different things. Um, we can put together, most of that stuff in the next three to six months, and then get it in front of you guys for review, and then it's really kinda on your clock. Yeah, so, hopefully we can get through this process in this calendar year, that's gonna be tight, probably it's gonna be about this time next year, assuming things go well, and they rarely do.
So, I guess my question would be from the water standpoint. Um, I feel like we need to, to keep moving forward so that we're not dead in the water, so to speak, when this comes. Um, I would like to do some kind of agreement, whether it's a handshake or whatever, that that we can go ahead and get an application into the state, make sure that where the state's really gonna tell us we have to go, so we can start getting some hard numbers on the well.
Okay.
Is that something that, I mean, I feel like that.
So, in terms of hard numbers on the well, I'd say put it off of our.
Okay, that, yeah.
Um, and it shouldn't be that, it should.
I think we're gonna have to get a number of, 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 from the state before we can do RRSP. Um, otherwise I'm giving them too much of a language, they're like, no, we need a permit before we do the rest.
And they said that the permit could be up to a year.
Well, I think those guys, yeah, I mean, I just wanna keep those guys moving, so we'll deal with that with our board.
Do you want to join?
Um, no, Petroff and Benbel are the water rights.
Right there.
They're not together anymore, yes, not gonna wait there. But they're not doing, they do our, like, parliamentary, is that what they do in our resolution stuff? They don't do the water stuff. So, Matt, Chris Amowski is still doing the water right. And, um, right water will do the application, probably for the well or.
Both are good moves. And the permit for the well shouldn't be expensive. So, um, we can put to a letter agreement that says craft companies will front those costs, up to like thirty-five hundred bucks, something like that, just so that you guys know you're not coming out of pocket and it doesn't hold up on the process with the development. But, I think we got, we got a lot of heavy lifting to do on.
I just wanna make sure about a time you come back, we're not going well, okay?
No, that's fine, and what we can do is we can put this into the developer's agreement, whatever split off, dock there.
So, I got, I got a question on, on the mill levies. Um, is that just designed to, you know, to put off your debt? Basically, just get in trouble?
Uh, no, but it's a great question, this, this stuff is, it's seem to complicate, unless you're in this every day, it's hard to wrap your head around it. So, the way it works is, it's an additional tax that's put on the homes from the time when the first home built, actually even before when the first home buyer moves in. And then what, how it's typically structured is it's a thirty-year bond from the time that we issue debt against those notes. Um, so, depending on the strength of the bond market, whether or not there's a buyer for it, and a whole bunch of other factors, we may do that early on in the project, we would like to, or maybe a couple years into the project. Um, what it does is it basically helps us finance somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-something percent of all of the infrastructure that we've already listed. Uh, it reduces our cost of capital, cause quite frankly, it's a hell of a lot easier to borrow against tax dollars than it is for me and my Toyota outside car. So in theory, what we're trying to do is hit a lower price point for the homes, so that we don't have to build the emissions, that's really what a lot of this comes down to.
Well, as you raised, the mill levy, it's over a thirty-year term.
So the mill levy spits.
Okay, mill levy spit.
So, we do not have the authority to go out and let Jack the Mill levy up fifty percent regardless of what you run in the town with. Yeah. So, it is tied to, Diane, would you mind chiming in, discuss a little bit about Gallagher, if you would?
Um, so, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great, um, so, hmm, for the last fifty years, uh, there's been, uh, a constitutional. Um, so, hmm, for the last fifty years, uh, there's been a constitutional amendment called the Gallagher Amendment that, um, required a certain ratio between commercial and residential property on a statewide basis. And many of you know that that was voted out, um, uh, at the last election. And so, what'll happen now is that, um, the, the valuation for property will be more dependent on what the state legislature does on an annual basis. But in spite of that, districts will, um, continue to have what are called mill levy caps in place, which, um, means that the district cannot exceed a certain number of mills on an annual basis that it imposes for both debt and operations. Um, and so, although we can't know with the Gallagher Amendment going away, how valuation, assessed valuation, uh, may be impacted by that, the mill levy caps are gonna keep those, um, actual dollars that are being paid by homeowners down, um, to a particular level based on the cap. And probably, you know, in a couple of years, my guess is, um, you'll see some stabilization, uh, uh, from the legislature, um, of the, of the valuation process. And it won't really look too much different than it does today. The value of a cer, of a mill levy cap is that it shifts the risk of development from the homeowner, um, to the investor. The person who buys the bonds is taking the risk that if development doesn't proceed as quickly as anticipated, or if the valuation of the property of the homes isn't as high as anticipated, it's the investor who has to live with the mill levy cap amounts rather than increasing mill levies, uh, constantly on the homeowners.
Beyond that, the developers' agreement has identified those caps. Whenever the home buyer buys a house, there's gonna be eighty-seven different initials and like signatures that say like, here's what your taxes are gonna be. The mortgage companies all understand how these things work and factor them when they're pre-approving the amount. And to the extent somebody's got a broker, normally they've got a decent understanding.
No surprises.
And we like to represent these things because we don't wanna be on paper somebody coming back and saying we didn't know. Diane, when I was going through all that stuff about, you know, call it ITAs and how the districts would play together, did I mess up anything? Does all that sound right to you?
Um, the wonderful thing about intergovernmental agreements is that they're tremendously flexible. And, uh, so if we're doing an intergovernmental agreement between the water districts and our districts, um, it will be largely up to the negotiation between the entities and the attorneys and can be crafted pretty much, um, as necessary as sort of a one-off, a custom agreement.
We'll be down the road.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the drawings that you put around, can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Give us an idea.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You can definitely keep those and then we'll send you clean ones.
Who's wanting the, uh, brand new paper this last week?
Was there?
Yeah. Johnny Briggie.
Over Johnny News, the better. Oh, really? So not Tabitha or that was?
No, they're similar. I don't know what you're talking about.
Never had a beef with one of them.
Nice. We're kind. We're excited. We understand our role. We understand that the town doesn't have a gazillion dollars to spend for infrastructure for us. That's not what we're asking for. We're here to make sure that we'll pair our own way and figure out a structure that works for both. We just wanna make sure that if we do, we have enough certainty to move through the project as we anticipated today and with what will ultimately be blessed by all of you as we move through the process.
Our manager's been telling us we need to raise water rates and we keep telling him no and he keeps coming back every year and you need to raise water rates and we keep telling no. Well, you guys get this milk. Or I'll look like thirty years. That's right. Once I first bounce a pole with a... I have, I don't know if this is the most, that's just behind me. Uh, but we didn't even talk about this. But, uh, every time I drive through Palm Valley, I, I'm... Well, if you get them too wide, then you're, uh, looking at the speed.
So, we, uh, we've got something we'll share with you that we put together when we put together a package for independents, talking about the life safety and the width of the roads. And like the average speed, whenever it's thirty-six versus thirty-two versus forty-eight and so on. This, and this is something we definitely talked about with your plow operator also. But generally speaking, if you can get it narrower, it reveals, people tend to go outside more from the front porches. And God forbid somebody gets hit on a bike or walking or something like that. They've gotta create a percentage of living at like thirty-four feet or thirty-two feet versus thirty-six. But that is something that we can work on as we move through the design process also.
We'll have the input with Yim's company on all aspects of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. This is what's gonna move, like, likely, that will narrow it down without the, a lot of cost. The Carter Springs.
How many bides have we seen in this town?
We'll slow them down if you have any questions.
Well, we went through that last, which I'm gonna have to change some stuff. If they get that, I'll be there.
Yeah, I spoke to Jeff about it.
So, I'll revert that, 'cause I think, well, what I think was I got... We pulled back twenty years and tried to pull it back. I think it's just about twenty years.
We, we didn't change it, so I talked to them about the concerns.
Um, good point, thank you.
The biggest things, and I have that, I never sent it to them. I talked to Jeff about it. It was the eminent domain. When we talked about the time, um, you know, the vesting period for a long, a long time during that meeting, you know, and we made some calculations, but I think they've explained it. And then the fifty thousand dollars that they would donate to the town for to help, in other words.
Once we have y'all's blessing on these documents, we're gonna turn Towns Code over to our engineers and landowners. So to the extent that you guys don't like the required road width, for example, now is a good time to take a look at that stuff and get us feedback. Because otherwise, our guys are gonna design to what the town has already approved.
Well, in, in my world, you know, I think we've made some headway and we'll all sit down in this group and just discuss the traffic and everything else that we need to go through and discuss. I think that's, I think together we can make it work.
If there are anything else in the contract that the board has questions on that would be their way to disapprove it or make any more changes?
We're talking about the busy schedule for you and how you're doing, you know.
I think we covered points that we were talking about in the last...
Right, the concerns, yes.
We'll take a look at the final draft and we'll go from there.
Okay.
So we'll separate the two, because we're getting... We'll sandbag that a little, let's say Monday. But we'll push it as quickly as we can. And if we need to push to the next meeting or delay it out a couple of weeks, we get it. We talked about fairly significant changes from where we were.
Well, this is important enough. Yeah.
I'll be realistic with you, let me know, because actually tomorrow I'm gonna be working on the agenda for next two weeks. So if the board wants to, realistically, what can you get it?
To say early next week. What if we didn't have to put on the agenda last two steps? We always pull it from the... I'd rather, so we can't, you know, if we get it planned, we, you know, let's just, you know, so put on the agenda and if we have everything, if we can remember it, and put it without, we can, we can pull it and forget the final hour. If we need the table, put the table.
Yeah, every listening service on the water.
Anything else on board?
Any other questions?
Any questions? There we go.
You and yourself. No questions? Okay. No questions?
Thank you.
Recording.